Welcome everybody to the show. I am Brian Bogus and you're not.
I'm
Light over. So now you can't see me because I was trying to hurry up because I was trying to put my shirt on. I forgot. I didn't have a shirt on before the thing started. So I got the hoodie on in front of me, not in back.
This is not out to be a talk after dark.
And everyone else is here. I'm taking myself.
Hey, I'm Jamal Smith. Welcome to episode 60 and the third month, I guess, anniversary of the fires. And we have.
Tony Bailey reigns. The Tony Talk Show is today.
Indeed, indeed.
I can't do the dun 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 dun. But I have a really special guest that's coming on with us this morning from the Altadena Town Council. Melissa Marona.
You know what?
I'm excited about that.
Yeah, I'm very excited as well. And in fact, we're going to hold off on the announcements and what have you. We want to definitely jump in and, you know, let you talk to Melissa and hear what she has to say and get it going.
Alrighty.
So without further ado, Tony is going to be solo. We're going to bring the guest in and Jamal and I are going to exit stage left. So enjoy the show. We're expediting things today.
Toodles. Hello, hello. Hi, Melissa.
Hi, Tony. How are you?
I'm great. Thank you so much for coming on. Super important. Each week I try to bring either information or a guest on that can really help us in the community out there in Cyberland, right? Understand and really learn about what's going on in Altadena. And so everyone, I met Melissa a week ago today in the afternoon at a meeting with After the Fires and she gave me her card and my intent was to bring her on the talk show and talk to her about it. And somehow I misplaced the card. And so Saturday, when I was up at Loma Alta Park, which we did on our recap show yesterday, I saw her again. I was like, oh, I'm so glad I saw you. And so I got her card again and told her that I wanted to bring her on. So thank you for agreeing to come on this morning, Melissa, with us. And because you're a member of the Town Council for Altadena, I thought it was important, and I've seen you twice in a week, to really hear from you about what you all have been doing in the last 90 days, right? I mean, all of us first cried, grieved, you know, we're in disbelief. Some of us are still in shock and disbelief. We know we're into the next phase, which is debris removal, you know, and and people submitting plans, getting builders and architects and contractors so that they can rebuild their homes. But you have, I think, a little bit different insight, maybe because you all are dealing with Supervisor Catherine Varger. You all are dealing with Rep Judy Chu, Governor Newsom's office and people that hopefully will listen to you all as a town council and hear what you're hearing from Altadenians, from many Altadenians about what we as a town need to help in the long-term recovery and to help us get past some of these issues that we're encountering, right, of roadblocks for permits of, you know, the sprinklers, the panels, the, you know, all kinds of nonsense that you all are a lot more privy to than something we may just hear. And as I told you, myself, Jamal and Brian all really try to be as accurate as we can. And I will call someone or go to a meeting in a heartbeat so that the information that I present here is accurate because we don't want Altadenians and others that are, you know, in the community, even Pasadena or Sierra Madre, or our overall broader community to get misinformation because that that just doesn't help us, right? So can you tell us a little bit about some of the things that you know the Altadena Town Council not only has worked on, but maybe what they're currently doing? And then we could talk about some other things as well?
Sure, certainly. And thanks for having me to the show. Again, I am a town council member. I represent the area, including the Meadows, Levinea, Cheney Trail, anything that is west of Fair Oaks, north of Altadena Drive. And so all of the town council is broken up into eight different census tracts. We have two representatives for each area. If you don't know who your town council member is, you can go to Altadena Town Council online and you can find your representative. So that's something I wanted to say that there are two people per census tract that are available to raise the voices up. And that is what the town council was founded on, right? That we would be the voice of Altadena because LA County is 10 million people. Certainly, the supervisors don't represent all 10 million because many are within cities. However, LA County itself is so large, as you know. And so we, yeah, we wanted to be the voice of Altadena. And to do that, we need to hear from the people. And so within the fire, and now I'll get back into your question. I just wanted to make sure setting the stage that we opened the door there that, you know, we want to hear from everybody. And that sometimes can be tough. There can be two big sides to each story, right? But within the fire, our greatest thing that we heard at the very beginning was there is a lack of information flowing both ways. And so what we wanted to really work on is right away is to get the information from whatever agency was big at that time. If it was FEMA and we needed all of that, if it was the county and we need to get our rights of entry in and make sure that everybody knows what's required. Why do you want to perhaps get your foundation taken care of? What are what are both sides of the story? What does it mean if you opt out? What does it mean if you opt in? And some of those types of information? And so what we really wanted to be was a conduit for the flow of information. No, given that this has been such a great magnitude, but we have tried really hard to be that source of information. Working on applying some pressure if it needed to be to get the water back on, for example. You know, contacting the water companies often, you know, I am blessed that I live in the Meadows. Our whole area, other than four homes down on Canyon Crest, right near Lincoln, our whole area was was avoiding the fire. And so
And you know, that's almost a miracle because growing up in Altadena, if you had friends or family that lived in the Meadows, anybody knows Meadows is one way in, one way out. When we would have to ride the school bus up there to drop kids off and it would turn around and all that, right? And we would always say, if there's ever a fire in the Meadows, everybody's dead. Not that that's what anyone wants, right? But because there's only one way in and out. And if that area going up that hill and around catches fire, there, where do you go? You can't run, can't do anything. And so the fact that everything east of it basically is gone, right? For the most part. And it's still there. We were like, I'm grateful that all of your homes and everything and your lives were spared. But it was like, that's really a miracle. Because always growing up, we were like, if the Meadows ever gets on fire, it's over, you know?
Yeah, that's my second evacuation. I've lived in the Meadows for about 18 years now. I used to live on the east side of Altadena and we started our family on Mariposa and Hyview. And so that home is gone. But so I've lived all over Altadena for almost 30 years now. And but long story short, when we were coming back, all of my neighbors had so many questions. Is the electricity going to be on? How do we get the gas on? How do we get the water back? What are we doing? Can we drink it? You know? There are so many questions. The the agencies are overwhelmed, right? And so I was trying to get out as much information as possible to people as well as constantly contacting the water agencies. Hey, the Meadows is an area where we could turn off the rest, you know, if possible, if they let you. Can we get that area up? Can we get Levinea up? Is it possible to get Cheney Trail? What is the art of the possible? And so sometimes I think people don't see that we are behind the scenes trying to push on a lot of areas. For example, we meet with Southern California Edison to be able, there was a void of information for a long time from Edison. I think they were wary to come out and to talk to everybody. We really said, hey, a lack of information, I talked directly to Edison and said, a lack of information is worse than whatever information you have. If you have no poles, no restoration, let the people know that. We need to know. It's going to be eight weeks. It's going to be 100 weeks. Whatever it is, we need that information. The gas company daily was sending out that, you know, this is done, that is done. And so I think sometimes we get the voice of some, you know, we get the ear of some of these utilities and we're able to apply some pressure. In fact, Southern California Edison is coming to the town council meeting on April 15. They're going to present some of their plan. They likely will come again in May and present more of their plan. They're not sure exactly what for undergrounds. That doesn't mean I'm saying we know exactly what's going to get undergrounded yet, but they have done. I think it's two miles worth of undergrounding up near the Zane Gray area. It's a small start, but they are really, really starting to understand what it's going to take to get undergrounded.
When you burn down a whole town, you better understand. And see, that was one of the things too, that we've talked about here, but that we hear from people, right? Is like, within a week, the poles were put back up, a lot of them. That's they started with a leak and putting transformers up. Well, we'll never be all underground if they put stuff right back up. And this don't mean to say anything's perfect, but this would have been the perfect time when all the houses are gone to do underground trenches and put everything underground. So it was kind of mind boggling, like, why would you go right back above ground immediately? When you missed the opportunity to do underground, right?
Yeah. And I, in all fair disclosure, I worked there for about 12 years until 2015. And so I understand the process a little bit. It's actually why I went on for town council. That's a side note, but to help get the Meadows and upgrade, we were out of power all the time up here in the Meadows and I was getting furious knowing that Edison could do it. And so I was like, how do I run and actually help my neighbors get the power that they need? And so we actually did get an upgrade in 2023 and we were able to get 285 poles replaced and get so that all of our all the way up the hill, we could be able to get power. But to understand, you have to know that it would take digging trenches to get the power back on for the people that are here, they needed to immediately replace the poles and the transformers. That does not negate that they can go underground in the areas whereby they have, they will have undergrounding. Some of the things are that the map came out recently, the LA County Fire Map.
The Cal Fire Map, right?
Right, right. And so the fact that we were able to see that, there will be a correlation between the very high fire zones and where some of the undergrounding is. And they haven't exactly given us where that information is yet or where that fine line will be. So but we are trying to meet with them and apply some pressure.
So two miles over in Rubio Canyon by Zane Gray Terrace is at least for for now.
Yeah. Yeah. And so the other thing that people are wondering, this is something that I think is of interest. And this is what they're going to talk about, I think, at the town council meeting as well. If I have an overhead drop, does that negate me later? Let's say I have a home now and maybe I need to just do a little bit of repair. All of your panel boxes where you go and you flip the breaker, that box can come, it now they're both overhead and underground. So it doesn't mean that if you build and you put all of your resources overhead or underground, that it will not match up to when Edison decides what they're going to do. And so it's important that people know they need to get, and and most panels these days are both overhead and underground. And the very important thing is we want Edison at that, they are at the resources there on Woodbury and the Resource Center. And so meet with them to understand what it would take for you to have your service panel drop underground and make sure you meet with them about what the availability of power will be as you build your home. And so that's important.
Yeah. So I have a question about about that, only because you said the 540 Woodbury. My understanding is it's closing next week as well, right? On the 15th?
That's that's what I have heard. Yeah, yeah.
I was talking to my mother yesterday. She's referenced on this show all the time, right? But because because sometimes I'll be talking and she will have just gotten information and she'll text me and be like, no, that's not right. This is what we were just told. But when I went to their their place yesterday evening, she was saying that that kind of concerned her because there are a lot of people that just don't still have all the information and it almost makes it feel like, okay, we've given you three months, we're done. And so now how will all the information other than the Altadena Town Council or Altadena Talk Show get, because we're on five days a week, right? At 10 a.m. and we sit here till 11 or 11:30. But we try to get all the information out. So if it's not for things coming to us and us getting it out there and you all getting it out there, people won't have somewhere to go in a week's time to get any more information. And then we hear from our supervisor every now and then, right? Or they have those meetings on Mondays. But after a while, those may not be in effect anymore for the fire, right? Well, it doesn't mean, okay, the whole town is gone. Three months comes, okay, we're done. What do we do after that? And that's a big concern, especially for a lot of our seniors, right, that are in their 90s and 80s and maybe even in their 70s that, okay, what do we do now? We don't have anywhere to go. How do we get the accurate information? What if we have an issue with A, B, or C? What do we do? So what are your, what do you know? Or what are your thoughts on that? Besides, like, the town council and Altadena Talks staying really connected and making sure we get information out, right?
Right. And I think that's the idea of the Long Term Recovery Group that's being stood up right now. On Tuesdays at 11, organically, a group came together whereby the Altadena Town Council participates and most of the philanthropy groups in Altadena and Pasadena come together, the NGOs, as they call them, non-government organizations that are the CCC, the groups of churches that come there. There's all kinds of, I mean, everybody from the Girl Scouts to the Red Cross is there. And they're putting together a long-term recovery group. And that is an excellent thing for us to bring up. How can we have a location whereby seniors can go? And these are the types of things that, you know, we think about, but then it's like, well, how do we implement this? Do we put somebody at the senior center to answer questions? Can we talk to the supervisor about adding an area? I know that there will be the planning department and they do have one here nearby Altadena and so that we can be able to go there and answer your questions. But then what is a point of contact if you don't have internet and can't look it up? And those are things. And and we do worry about that. That is things that we have definitely thought about over and over again. How do we reach out to those people? And so that Long Term Recovery Group wants to put together. And this is what we were listening to the other day, Tony, when we were there with After the Fire. After the Fire, I'm sure you explained is a group that came together after the Santa Rosa Fire. And so they have a lot of great ideas because they've been through it. They've seen what's worked, what hasn't worked. The government official from Lahaina was there and he was able to give some insight. And so I think those block captains is the idea. They're going to start having block captains. They're going to map out areas whereby they'll have a point of contact for everybody in the city of, or in the town of Altadena so that you will know who your block captain is and people will go to you. One of the things that we have been like, oh, we need to go to these people, whether it's the water, whether it's FEMA. Really, after the fire made a really good point last week, have them come to you. You know, you're the customer. You're the people that are important. Where do we get that stood up? And so that's something that I'm not sure if it's mandate, if the money's running out, but it is something we will look into now that I know that that's closing. But and I know that the Long Term Recovery Group may not be able to stand that up as quickly as next week. So that's an urgent matter. We need to bridge the gap for. And how do we do that?
So one of the things, I know that that's a desire of that group of 90 organizations or whatever, but as you know, at Victory Bible, we've been doing this already 90 days in, right? Like boots on the ground. We've given away 30 cars. We've given away about a million and a half dollars. We're continuously getting donations in and giving. And after our, after the fires meeting, I had a meeting with FEMA and Cal OES. And then I had a meeting with them yesterday at my church with Pastor John and Pastor Angel. And at 11, which is why I said I have to get off this call, I start the long-term recovery process to become one of, because they're looking at Victory becoming a Long Term Recovery Center.
It's amazing.
Yeah. And so we finished our meeting probably at 4:30 yesterday and they called me at 4:54, like, Tony, did you get the email? Or they called me just after five. I missed the call and called back. And Timothy from FEMA was like, did you get the email? And I said, what email? He said, please look at your email and confirm. And it was, I had to register because today at 11, I start the workshops. So there are workshops from 11 to 1 Tuesdays and Thursdays through May, through mid-May. And then we at Victory will start the process as one of the Long Term Recovery Groups or Centers for the area. And so they were like, we don't have to stand you guys up. You're already doing it. You're already a foundation. You've already been doing this for 90 days. And that's when the real resources come in. There are some things that until you go through the training and become this that you won't have access to. Even the funding is different on a much larger scale. You get connections and all that after you've gone through the training and you're you're considered one that FEMA and Cal OES wants to support. So we had that. So now we'll be meeting with them every two weeks to do check-ins and updates on not only the training, but our next steps and what we're doing. So I'm really thankful and proud of of the fact that we have begun that with them. Instead of just having meetings that a lot's not going on. So whether or not, you know, we wind up doing something with this other group of 90 or whatever, we don't know, but definitely we are starting that process today. Because I, yeah, at 11, I will be on that training. So I know that I will continue through the Tony Talk Show or through Altadena Talks, our our podcast and the foundation that we have, because Altadena Talks also has a foundation. We will be part of that with Victory Bible because we've already done like the Builders Town Hall that I hosted there on the 8th of March. We are going to be participating in the Anthem to Ashes to Anthem Concert and Resource Fair and Event in at Memorial Park on the 26th. And so we're partnering with my church as we help with this long-term effort because it's so extremely important for all of us. And we want to make sure we're out there in the community. We're listening. We're getting accurate information from the sources that we need to get it from and giving it to the community. So I'm so glad that you and I have connected because I can always like, hey, Melissa, I found this out. Make sure you tell the town council this, right? Or the other groups you're connecting with, if I find something, you know, out a little bit earlier. So the, but the orientation is at 11 today. So I'm super excited to be on that in that training and starting that process.
One of the first things I heard when I became a council member is if we, you know, the town council really has to reach out to the churches in the area because you can't reach all of Altadena if you don't do that. And particularly on the west side of Altadena, there were four larger churches where they said, look, if you you need to make sure you get all of these churches in. And of course, yours was one of the top ones that we needed to know about. And so I think that that's something we could always do a better job at, conversely, making sure that everyone knows what the information is. I think at first, everyone was so bombarded with information that it was like, oh, what do I do? You know, and now I think that's sort of slowing down and we're able. And I'm so glad to hear you guys are going to be a part of that. I think that's one of the things. One of the other things that we're really looking into that is a great concern, right, is building back, right? You have to build to the 2022 building code, which means you have to add solar and indoor suppression, fire suppression, which are sprinklers. And so one of the things that we are working behind the scenes is looking at what does that mean regarding the water departments, right? We have four separate water departments here in Altadena. I, we do not have the power to do anything. That is a state water board issue, right? And so even the supervisor can't really, you know, the board of supervisors really is not in charge. I mean, they could recommend, we could do things. And so that's something we were talking to our Assembly Member Harabedian about. We've got his here. We're able to say, hey, here are the issues. Here are your upcoming bills. Do we need to do anything? What can you do? What can we do? And so that's all being taken a look at. I also want to say very strongly, we don't want to put anybody out of business. We don't want, you know, I understand that's somebody's livelihood. Also, we all have to come to the table so we could build back better, right? So that there is something we can do. That's going to take a huge effort to make sure that the water pressure is up to speed and and what does that look like? And so those are conversations we're having right now. And so right now.
Privy to some of those because I know that obviously Pasadena Water and Power Services and Area, right? And then the other three, Lincoln Avenue, Rubio and Los Flores all are privately owned water companies. Some people are saying, oh, we should collapse them into one. Well, they're all privately owned. You can't collapse anything, right? They have to agree to come together. And then part of it is those three for sure don't have the newer pumps and infrastructure that will give the PSI that if you say everybody has to have sprinklers, they're going to go off. And especially when there were several hydrants that were dead and there was no water at all. That's a bigger conversation. And then the whole thing with solar, and I will continue to say this because we've talked to some state senators already with some other people that I've been dealing with. And you can't mandate everybody have solar because, as you know, Altadena has tons of oaks. Oaks unless an arborist says are dead, can't be cut. And so like my parents' house that has three oaks, we know that one was not touched in the front yard. It's the baby. It's probably 40 years old. The grandpa or grandma, who's like over 100 years old, is was scorched, but has the most amazingly beautiful greenery regrowing. And then the one in the middle that was closest to the house and has buckling on the patio has not shown yet any more greenery. So I told my mom and dad the other day, I said, that one may have to get cut down. But we know if it's a white oak or a heritage oak, there's two different permits. One costs $10,000, one costs $15,000. The arborist has to come say it's dead first, then you can cut it. But even with that, those cover the house. And so if they couldn't get solar before, you can't mandate that they cut it because it's a state protected tree. And if it covers a house again and it can't be cut, then you can't mandate they get solar because they couldn't get solar before. So I think it's going to literally have to be a case by case basis that when the plans are submitted, they talk about what trees are there as well. And will these trees still be there? And okay, they couldn't get solar. They won't be able to because no sun will shine through those trees. So we can't mandate that solar. So those are the kind of conversations I know you all are having that we, that some other people I know are having with the state already for both water and the trees. The other thing, and I've said it a million times on here, is at first they were saying all electric houses. Well, you can't have all electric houses with 200 amperage poles and transformers that are above ground. Had they trenched and put everything underground and those are 400 amperage, then you could mandate all electric. But because that wasn't done and so many poles were put back up, they have now said, okay, you're you're right, right? It's not going to be all electric. You can bring gas. And at first they were like, if you take your chimney down, you won't be able to get a new one because no chimneys unless they're electric. That has now also been changed and waived. And people will be able to bring gas and have gas fireplaces. They just don't want wood burning because of the air quality issue. So they are listening. We are being heard. Fighting, right? And going to have that be saying, look, common sense tells you, you can't do all solar. You can't do all electric. You can't do all sprinklers because of this. So now the powers that be have to get their brains together and go, these people are absolutely right. And we live way up north or we're on this board over here. We're not in the community. We need to listen to the community, see what it is. And another thing that I was hollering about from day one, you're saying these are all new builds, so we have to go by the 22 codes. These are not new builds. These are rebuilds. Nobody wanted their houses burned down, you know, whether they were post-war built in the 50s, 60s or whatever. And so then they start going, oh, yeah, they're not all new builds and we will have to make some modifications to what those codes are and waive some things. Because if they could waive stuff for the Customs Commission and for Palisades, you sure better look at Altadena and go, oh, yeah, there's a different set of circumstances. What do we need to waive, right?
Right, right. And I agreed, agreed. I think that's something that we're trying to have conversation about as well. You know, we're very much in with the state senator and for our area. Love Sasha. She's amazing. She has been really here for us. It's one of the things we keep discussing with her office, various things. I mean, a lot of it is there's so many organizations that are involved, right? Because it's the California Energy Commission that deems what they call the T24. That's like the, you fill it all out and you hopefully come to your magic number at the bottom, but you can't add that magic number without having solar in it, right? And so how do we say, look, the solar isn't going to And so how do we say, look, the solar isn't going to matter anyway. How could we get an exception for this? Or, you know, having it open for the county for some of those things. I know they're going to be pretty rigid to begin with, but seeing a trend happen and us pushing, you know, a letter behind it and being able to say, could we talk about this? So a lot of things we try to do. Obviously, we want to be a transparent agency. We want to be a, you know, a group that comes before all of you. But a lot of times we hear the problem and we'll go directly to the source to try to say, here's the information. Here's what we're hearing from people that are within our census tract, within Altadena as a whole. This is a problem. And so one of the things to that end recently that came up, which was really interesting, the day that I saw on the beautiful Altadena page the other day, they were asking, somebody said, I'm curious about the forty-three that are missing. And so I went directly, and then there was all this discussion. And, and one thing that I think it's great that we all have these social media outlets, and I'm not disparaging any of that, but sometimes, but sometimes there can be a bill, uh, uh, one upon another. And so let's get the information that's needed. So immediately I was able to call Captain Williams and the sheriffs and he got back to me. He's really good about getting back to us pretty quickly. He said that thirty-four had been found and of those men had been, of the missing men had perished. And unfortunately, that day later in the day is the day they found the one on Boston. And, and so now there's eight missing.
I'm curious about the one still on my parents' block on Wapello between Lake and Mount Curves, Miss Sally on the north side. No one has seen Sally. No one has heard from Sally, her Pomeranians, nothing. And she barely left the house. And so I've talked to several of the neighbors still on both sides of her and others, and no one has heard from Sally. And we've been saying it from day one. So I don't know her last name. I'll get that for you and I'll text you later, but we're still wondering about where Miss Sally is. No one has seen or heard from her. So we're assuming she perished in the fire as well. But we would love to know, right? Another statistic or another number added to the count.
Yeah. And sadly, I think there at that location, he was listed as last seen there. And I know that they've done, the sheriffs have done a lot of work. They've got the missing posters that are going out to other, you know, uh, agencies to make sure that people see that. I think the sheriffs have done a lion's share of work to be able to find this. But now we're really pushing, look, now that some of the debris is cleared, we'd really like another look for those eight people in the location or nearby the location where the fire hit for them. So that is something we also have requested. We joined with the supervisor to request that again. Yeah.
On her lot, but then they're like, they don't want to really go digging, because they don't want to find their neighbor either, right? Like the emotional toll and, and how freaked out, but, but I know personally, a couple of them that have walked on the lot, because I was there one day. And I was like, come, come from there, you know, like, don't do that. And they were like, well, we haven't heard from Sally. I said, I know, but you're probably not the right person either to go walking through, because if you find her, what are you going to do, right? I mean, other than we call authority, but the emotional after effects of that, I don't want you walking through there. I literally told one of the next door neighbors, like, Sully, come, come, come down from there, come down. And she was like, Tony! I was like, no, come on, get down from there type thing, you know, so, yeah.
In one of the first days that they had locked down Altadena, uh, we were able to go on a ride along in our census tract to see the damage with one of the sheriffs. And I think on that day, they had found someone and just the look on the faces of the sheriffs, who are people who do this all the time. I cannot imagine what that would do to somebody who's lost their home or is already, you know, there's such a trauma response. You know, we were evacuated from our home, as were others for roughly three weeks, right? And so the first night we got into our, I stayed with my parents down in Huntington Beach for a week and then we came back to a hotel. And the first night we were at that hotel, all of a sudden the fire alarm goes off and the power goes out. And I just laid there. I said to my husband, I don't, I don't care right now. This, I like, right, you know what I mean? And luckily it was a false alarm, but I think everybody's having kind of that trauma response. And when the wind picks up. Yeah, exactly, exactly. And that's what I think people have happened. Go ahead.
Because you brought up the sheriffs. I know we're coming up on time pretty soon for me, about twenty minutes. And I do want to say, anybody that's watching, please, if you have questions from Melissa, put them in the chat like you normally do. We'll put them on the screen. We'll flash them so she could see them. And if it's something that she can address, she will. But one of the things we've been hearing lately is people are back to burglarizing. We know that there was a major National Guard presence that was here. Palley still has National Guard. And if you are even a builder, you cannot get in without the residence and the approval. Because I know a builder who last week went there. He's from Altadena, but someone asked him to look at their lot. And he went and the National Guard is still guarding Palisades and you cannot get in if you're not a resident and show your ID. Which we know for a long time, they weren't even checking IDs here, right? So in the last couple of weeks, we know people have either come on the show and said it, or we know someone who has told us personally that, I know a girl named Jamie that at my church a week ago Sunday, she said somebody went and stole some things on her lot. Not only her lot, but others. My sister was in the town homes right there, Dove Creek, on Little New York, when you turn off in New York. Outside.
Right by Gharish.
Across from Gharish, right. And so the majority of those town homes are gone. There are about six that are there. My sister's is one. She's displaced, because they have to be gutted, right? So they don't know how long they're going to be inside. First, they said they were going to tear them all down. Now they're saying the ones that are standing won't be torn down. They'll rebuild the others like that, but they're all, they have to be gutted. Like, there's so much smoke and fire and, you know, damage inside. The insulation has to be replaced, the walls, all of this. But there's a gate there. She had to go meet AT&T to get her internet back on, because people are having to now get cameras. Because the house next to hers on each side recently had their doors kicked in and people rifled through all their stuff. And so of course, oh, call the sheriffs. And now there's supposed to be more patrols. The HOA won't get private security. But this is happening again all throughout Altadena. And it's like, okay, in the beginning, we had National Guard and some sheriff. Now lots are being cleared. We don't really care. And then there was another guy who was on the east side. He's African-American man and he is a therapist. But now he's been re-traumatized, because he was at his house one day doing something. And I know you probably heard it and saw it on the, the post, where the sheriffs came, I don't know if it were ten cars, something, an enormous sheriff presence response came. Guns drawn, wouldn't allow him to show this was his home, handcuffed him. So he was re-traumatized as a black man in America today, who thought he was going to be killed by the sheriff coming out of his own house, because he listed his property as one for them to do patrols by. So, but it's on the east side. And we know what we've heard, east side versus west side, who got the alerts, who got the responses, who didn't. So what is the town council doing, speaking with the sheriffs, or are you all doing anything? It's going to help with now people whose homes are partially standing or they're evacuated or whatever, and they're empty. And these knuckleheads coming back in, kicking doors in, breaking in through glass doors, sliding doors to burglarize now, three months later. And then the insurance is like, oh, well, we can't give you anything for that. Some people have said that too. So they're being traumatized again and again. So are you all having those conversations with the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, definitely. Because one of the things that even here on the west side, one of our town council members went back to his house and he too, similar situation. Unfortunately, it wasn't guns drawn, but I mean, fortunately for him, but and one of the things they have noted is if you are having somebody come work at your home and you are listed as one of those homes that needs, make sure they have some way of noting, yes, I am here because of X, Y, and Z. But we, that is one area where we're getting a lot of pushback, like we, we're not getting the National Guard. There's too many ways in Altadena versus in the Palisades, where it's kind of like the meadows, where there's sort of one way in and out, even though there isn't. And so that's something that I think is of utmost importance. One of the things that I think will be really important is the neigh, kind of the neighborhood watch, you know? I think there's got to be more than that, but obviously neighbors need to look out for neighbors. Unfortunately, in areas where there are no neighbors, that's where we need to have more patrols looking around. And especially, I know especially at night, but I don't think they're coming at night. I think they come and they're pretty brazen in the middle of the day. And they come and do stuff. And so that's an area we definitely need to work more on getting some sort of solution, I think, listing. And I think the more that people do police reports, one of the things before all of this, right? If you are doing, you, even if you think, oh, it's not going to go anywhere, it is critical that everybody report an issue. Because otherwise then the sheriffs don't look. They go, well, that, nothing happened in that area. And I'll say, but we, for example, we had a big stolen mail up in the meadows for a long time. We kept having them come before the fire. They were stealing all our mail up here. And so the sheriff's like, I didn't get one report of stolen mail. Well, because nobody was reporting it. So suddenly somebody's passport got stolen, that was coming in. And they reported it. And then we started getting more reports, therefore then the sheriffs could put more resources on it. And so that's, I mean, I know that's not the answer people want to hear. They want it just to automatically happen. But for the sheriffs to be able to do something, they need to be able to have tangible evidence that says, we need more people in this area. How do we get more? And so if they do report it, then it may not help you in that moment, but it definitely helps your neighbors and it helps the town as a whole. So I wish there was more I could say about that.
Because that's something that we can reiterate here, right? And just remind people, if by chance, something happens, if not to you, but your neighbor, if somebody comes and steals what, you know, you put to the side, right, that you want to take home. It might be bricks, right? But somebody decides they want to come steal the tile or something that they see. Report it to the sheriff, right? They're morons. They need to be, you know, brought up, but report it. Because if not, the sheriffs can't allocate resources in that area, right? And so just like we had a discussion a week and a half ago, because we heard about the mail, oh, you won't be able to vote. And then I said something on, I think, Monday or Tuesday last week, but then Dr. Shirley Weber, our Secretary of State, held a webinar Wednesday night that I got on. And then I came back Thursday and said, look, you do not have to change your license. You do not have to change your physical domicile address. But you must go in where you would register and change your mailing address, because any type of election mail, pre-ballot information or ballots will never be forwarded by the post office. It will be returned to the Secretary of State. And so that's helpful information. Because if we don't know that, right, we're automatically thinking what we hear, oh, you got to go change your driver's license. No, you don't, because then you become a resident of that city. And yes, it changes. But one of the things she said was, because as, as we know, LA County is humongous. And we are a VAC, a Voting Access Center County. So any place that you in LA County walk in, it's a vote center, you can vote. It doesn't matter what you're addressing. Yeah, that's what she, she said on the webinar. She said LA County is a VAC, which is a Voting Access Center County. And because of that, you never have to go to just your local polling place. Anywhere within your county, you can go and you can give your name and they should be able to pull you up at some point and you can vote right there. Not provisional, but your actual vote. So that was important information that had I not spent an hour on that webinar, we were going by other stuff people said, and it might not have been wholly accurate. And so I wanted to make sure that I got the accurate information to discuss on the show. Because people now are, are learning more about Altadena Talks. They're coming on more. And they know that we are a good resource for information, because we will vet the information, right? And it makes it accurate.
And speaking of mail, that's another large organization we've been having discussions with, right? They want to be able to put the post office back in Altadena, but we've also said, Altadena needs a mail counter in the interim, right? Maybe at Webster's, maybe at some other location. And that is a monolith in which I had no idea, you know, that is a very large organization. And as soon as we put a little pressure on them, then they respond, like with this kind of pat answer. We're like, that's not good enough. We want to have something here that's ours. Not only because it's the right thing to do, because you are bringing back the post office, but because it's a sign of hope. Similar to like people were, you know, disappointed about Loma Alta Park. Some were upset that that's coming back. Some, you know, see it as a sign of hope that we're rebuilding something, whether it's now or in the future. We need to have these things coming back, so that businesses don't have to travel all the way to the other side of town to take their post, you know, their post somewhere else or, or mail something out. It's one more thing that we need in the city to be able to say, hey, look, we're bringing everything back. So we're doing what we can.
Uh, saying to the postal service, and I just thought about this right now, partnering with grocery outlet, if they have space inside or, or even in that back part of the parking lot, right? Where maybe they could put a trailer there that could be a temporary post office, right? Because it's directly across the street from where the one is gone. And, and we're already asking people, when you're up there at your house, go get something at grocery outlet, right? Go, go support a business, go to a local eatery or whatever. And so maybe, because I've also heard, they want people to do all their forwarding, so they don't keep coming to the main post office on Lincoln, because it's so crowded. Well, then give Altadena one back, put a temporary trailer, right? That's, that's fully secure, because we know it's got to be secure, whether they get an armed guard, what, I mean, you know, whatever. There's a large area in the backside of that parking lot of grocery outlet that's rarely used, that maybe they could set up a trailer that would be the US Postal Service office.
Not a bad idea.
It's directly across from where it was, so people could still feel like part of the community. It would add hope. It would add, this is the location, right? And if people still want to walk in and get their mail, then instead of going to passing a post office, okay, we have this temporary location here for, temporary for a year or two, right? Until they build the other one back. But that, I think, might be a, a good location, if they could, that you all maybe can, as you're doing this back and forth, give and take, that you all might be able to suggest.
Yep, wrote it down right now. It's a great idea. I don't think anybody had thought of here before. I think we were sort of thinking Webster's only because I think at some point in time, they had had one in the past. But now it's definitely something we want to look into. And I think that's great, because you're right, it is right across the street. Lastly, you asked about Judy, Representative Chu's office. And some of the things we are doing there is putting letters together, so that once she goes and is voting for funding for Charles White Park or funding for the Altadena Community Center, that we, while we know that money is needed all over the place, these are tangible things that she can do to bring back money from Washington for funding. And so those are items that we are definitely trying to get done. Anytime there's any kind of funding and we need to get our letters behind it, that's some of what, you know, we can't go picket or do whatever, but we definitely can put our voice behind that. And we know that it is the will of most of Altadena that that money is there. And lastly, I know there are questions, because the Altadena Town Council launched a recovery fund. You may be aware of, it's the Altadena Eaton Fire Recovery Fund. Myself and Connor Tripola are the co-chairs of that committee. However, we have five people from the community that are serving on that committee. And we met with GoFundMe, the executive committee of the town council. And the CEO of GoFundMe is an Altadena resident. And so, yeah, he was gracious enough to put us in touch with, uh, or to get our funds started through gofundme.org, which is a 501(c)(3). And so we're able to get that money. It will be direct relief for Altineans. And within about a month or so, we should be giving five to five hundred dollars for our first two hundred and fifty thousand dollars directly, direct relief to Altineans. And so that will all be from the five community members. We're trying to keep kind of a, a wall between the town council and it will be just the community members that will be voting on that. So we're excited to have that moving forward. And more information will be on the website shortly about how to apply, how to get the money, all of that. So that will be determined tonight. We're actually having a meeting as to what that will look like. And one of our concerns is not everybody has internet. How do we get out to everybody and get the word out? So that is one of the things we're discussing as well.
We'll get the word out for certain, for sure.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Yeah, so you can send me anything to the email that you want the community to know, because we do this five days a week. So we get flyers out, we get all the information out. What is the website and what days does the town council meet now? Because I want to make sure that we have that, so that anyone watching, you know, won't have to guess or worry. Because I know, is this, is it on your card? AltadenaTownCouncil.org?
Council.org. Yep, yep. I was just going to say that. Yep. And so we meet the third Tuesday of every month. And so, and we have information there. And the Altadena Council, towncouncil.org also has our recovery website with all of the information that you could get at most locations. We're also on Instagram and Facebook as Altadena Town Council. So we try to host often there, so that we have all of the information you guys would need. And if you have any questions, it's Melissa Marona, melissa dot marona at altidinatowncouncil.org. You could directly email me and I'm happy to get back to you, so.
And I will spell out your name, because it's not the typical list. M I L I S S A. No, it's M I L I. M I L I S S A, no, it's M I L I S S A dot M A R O N E. No, A, Marona at AltadenaTownCouncil.org, only because I have the card right here, because she gave me two of them last week. So um, so yes, that's, that's Melissa. Thank you so much for taking the time to come. We could have gone on for another hour had I not, you know, needed to stop, but I would like to invite you to come back on. Hold on one second, Jamal. I'd like to invite you to come back on, maybe in a few weeks. Definitely. I'll send you a invite another time and we'll we'll schedule that because I think it's so important to hear from our council members and other officials. So thank you. Jamal does have a question for you.
Yeah, Melissa, I have one quick question. I know you had indicated what the town council plans to do in terms of. Meeting with other individuals after the fifteenth is over regarding the uh disaster recovery centers. But did you hear anything from um LA County at all or FEMA or anything about what's going to happen after that?
I have not. And I I, right after this, we'll look into that because uh others in the council may have heard. I have not personally heard anything. And so I would be interested to know. And if I do find out information, I'll send you guys a uh update so that you guys can know if there's anything. And I will relay the fact that that is of interest, especially to the seniors in our area. We need to have a one stop location where people can understand what's happening.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, definitely appreciate it.
I think. I think it also gives them a little bit more of a sense of security. Even if, and somewhere to go, even if they've asked it like a hundred times, right? They just need to get out, go back to their community, because I know my parents, my mom, sometimes I want to say, why did you go again? You were just there yesterday, right? But I had to realize, like, if that's what they need to do. To get out of where they're temporarily housed to the community and go in there again. They might see friends there, they might just. I forgot to ask this yesterday, let me go back. That's the right, they should have that afforded to them. And if it brings security to them, so be it. So that would be great if if we could get it extended at least to six months, you know, a half year after. Did it three months to be like, okay, we're done, bye. Uh, I think it's not good. So if that is something you can take back, that would be fabulous. Brian, you were coming on. Did you want to ask her or or say something? Cause I know you will, if you can.
No, I was coming on to kick you off, because y'all both got something to do at 11 o'clock. So I was just trying to make sure that you got the time right. You know, it's okay, you got two minutes.
Yep, I have three minutes. I know. Look, I keep doing this and so does Melissa. I think we're watching the clock, so it's all good. But um, this was a great conversation, Melissa, today. Thank you. I definitely look forward to having you come back on in a couple of weeks or so. And if we get questions as a result of this. I will make sure that I email them to you and then we'll discuss them here on another day.
Well, what a pleasure it was to meet you, the hardest working woman in Altadena, I think, Tony.
Some days I feel that way, but it's again for our community. So I'm going to be there. I'm going to be out there. I'll be at the park again Saturday doing more landscaping and, you know, different stuff. We try to get out into the community for the events that we talk about during the week. And then what we're able to do, if any of us are able to get out, we'll take videos or pictures and bring them back and do a recap about it on Monday. And so it's just important to all of us, having, you know, grown up there since we were either born or two or three or whatever it is. So, yeah.
And don't forget, Melissa, when you talk to people about our podcast, you have to tell them that this is the longest running podcast in the world. Talking about Altadena.
Sixty episodes in, that's right. Thanks, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa. It's a pleasure.
And Brian and Jamal, I'm jumping into the green room with Melissa, then I'm going to log off because, as you know, I have to do this long-term recovery training.
Exactly. You got one minute and nine seconds.
Goodbye. All right, kick us out.
Well, that was an exciting, fun-filled, packed show. You guys got a lot of information. You got Melissa from Altadena Town Council. As well as Tony's vast knowledge. So the question and answer session was.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Melissa, you're back there. Okay, she dropped off. I was going to tell her how to get out. So never mind, I'm removing myself and I'm leaving the studio. Bye.
So we actually have uh.
Thank you, Marcus.
So much stuff to pack you with this week. Tomorrow's. Uh, Wayback Wednesdays, of course, we're going to want you to come on and tell us what's going on with what you remember from back in the day. Just wanted to uh give some shout outs. I know I started, oh my God, I messed up the day. I started the Instagram thirty minutes in. Because I didn't have a shirt on, so I was worried about the shirt. I just wanted to give you a shout out, Mr. Black to DL, Shawtup, Original Underground Media, Moson, RozTaz. And Tulani702. I think uh that's my nephew's mom, I think. I have to look after this, but welcome to the show, everyone. We appreciate you jumping in and tuning in. Don't forget, we always, we also go live to eight different platforms, our three personal platforms, uh two. Um, YouTube pages and two Instagram pages. And as of. I believe tomorrow, we should be able to go on the new Altadena Talks Facebook page. And, oh, by the way, I forgot to announce this, we are an official foundation nonprofit. As of yesterday, we got the letter in the mail, along with Altadena Fresh Start Foundation, so. We're, we're here for the moment, whereas everybody else is dropping off at three months, four months. We guarantee you, unless I die, or anything should happen. Now, we are going to be here for you Monday through Friday, tenish. And make sure that you get what you need to get busy. Uh, our letter should be up on our website pretty soon. I know on our website it was pending approval. I can gladly say that I can take that off today. And actually put the link where you can go to download our determination letter. And uh. We are trying to really show you that Altadena is a community and a town that, you know, everybody wants to help everybody. So we understand that there are people out there fly by nice, jump in, jump out. I'm a special shout outs to all the other organizations that are out there trying to uh do some things. I mean, I'm gonna give Kevin a shout out. They're doing a golf tournament. They're doing all kinds of things to get the community going. So congratulations to all the people who are out there participating and, you know, showing love and providing the donation stations. We do appreciate you. Uh, we're going to be having some nonprofits coming on in the next couple of weeks to talk about what they're doing in the community. Um, because we do need you guys to see who else is out there.
You know, it's not just. Like I mentioned earlier, we're going to have a variety of people coming on, not just about building, but everybody who's helping out, who's giving out money. Who's providing the, you know, the.
Entertainment.
Resources.
That's what we need right now.
Speaking of that, on Thursday, and Brian mentioned it's an action-packed week. Thursday, we have Dr. Demetra Clark that's going to come on and talk about mental wellbeing and kind of dealing with uh this uh this tragedy, you know? And um, you know, dealing with mental health. So it should be very helpful. She has a concept called Post Traumatic Growth, and she's going to touch on that. Um, and it should be a good show on uh Thursday as well.
Yeah, I'm just excited about how the direction in which this is going. I mean, everything that we decided to put into play is now working. So uh people are starting to come on. Uh, we're starting to get uh as many people as we need to see the show. We need to, uh people, if you are a daughter or son of a senior that was in Altadena, please turn them onto this podcast. Because it's imperative that they get the plethora of information that we spit out every day. Because it's not anywhere else. I mean, what other place can you go to that you can search for no up-to-date stuff? You'd have to go to five different websites. And shout out to Pasadena Now, Altadena Now, Pasadena Star News for covering it, and any local stations that are out here doing it as well. We would love to have you guys come on because uh I'm all about Altadena. And so we are all about Altadena and everything, resources wise, whatever you have. Please join in, let us know. Uh, this podcast is not just about surviving a disaster, but it's also about creating our community. And coming together, even though we're dispersed. I'm way out here in Santa Clarita. But, you know, with the exception of the last one, that was Carlos because my will was going through it. But usually after every podcast, I drive to Pasadena and go to these events and go capture coverage. And go show you that these things are actually happening, not just we showed a flyer, two people showed up, oh, yeah. But the whole thing is, we're trying to spread the news of every event that happens in Pasadena, even the ones in Pasadena for Alt. So our community is is small, but is strong. And most of the people that lived here lived there all their lives. If you didn't, you normally came back ten, five or 10 times throughout your life.
Family that's out here.
That too. So you're always coming out here. So without further ado, we are going to, you got anything else? Cause Instagram just shut down.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll go, I'll go hard on the uh advertisements tomorrow, because I don't think there's anything going on today.
Well, I just learned something. No matter what time you start the Instagram, if the show goes to an hour, it cuts off.
One thing to note. Right. One thing to note, and this was uh per the conversation with Tony and Melissa. Um, apparently on the fifteenth, April fifteenth, the, that'll be the last day for the disaster recovery centers. Now, what's going to happen after that is to be determined, both the Altadena Council, Town Council. And um, well, they're reaching out to a lot of the the officials to find out what's going on, but we're going to do our research as well to find out what's going to happen. Because it's hard to me, for me to believe that they're just going to leave people high and dry in Altadena. And take that resource center away and just leave them with nothing to do or no place to go. So we'll find out what's going to happen. Uh, so just stand by.
Because they still haven't, I mean FEMA's main goal, they can't really leave. That's why they extended it, because they haven't signed up every person in Altadena. When they go back to their meetings and they say, okay, well, how many people came through? Okay, now picture this, there's sixty-six hundred homes. There's at least one to four members in each home. So you're talking about 10,000, 20,000 people. What's your, what's the numbers? I want to see the numbers. How many people did you actually get to sign up? And if you didn't reach your goal, then there's a problem, because that means you didn't do your due diligence. I mean, where's the advertisement? Where's the notifications around town? That uh show what you're doing, where we're going, how did you reach people? I mean, I saw FEMA station across the street from the Borneer's uh Bible, uh, Bible College, Barber College. And uh, you know, he had no one there, but at the same time. Uh, you've got a thousand people over there getting free stuff. So why didn't you just talk to them while they were there? They just sit there like they're scared to talk to people, just like when I was going down to the, what do you call that? The um. The uh Civic Center for the Homeless Shelter. I didn't really want to go up there and talk to anybody, because I don't want them to feel that I'm trying to. Get the underlying issue. The whole point was I wanted to talk to somebody who was actually there and I got two or three people that didn't want to be on camera. They talked to me, but they didn't want to be recorded. And what I found out was, majority of the people that were there were actually homeless already in Pasadena. So they weren't actually vetting the addresses and the people. So, so it kind of made me sad. Because Julie, who was sitting on the lullaby board with me, she was down there the first two weeks. I have yet to talk to her. Probably going to uh figure out how we can get an interview with her to talk about it. But a lot of people talked about the conditions. You had people in there with their dogs, with. Uh, women sleeping next to men that didn't know each other. So they were doing a uh. From what I was told, they said, well, they could have went anywhere they wanted. I mean, how can you move around when it's a thousand people in a room that only holds like 500? You know, so it's not making sense. And so therefore, that's what we're at with. But you got any last parting words, uh Jamal?
Nah, just, well, yes, I do. Want to thank everybody who's been along with us uh on this ride. Called Recovery, to build Altadena bigger, better and stronger, episode sixty. Again, can you guys believe it? Three months ago, this is when all this craziness started. Um, but keep tuned in, keep communicating with us. Let us know what's going on uh in your heads, what you want to hear from us. Uh, and we appreciate you.
Well, we got a lot of events coming up this weekend as well. Uh, we will be announcing them in the beginning of the show tomorrow. Um, so stay tuned as usual. And uh just remember, once again, I'm Brian Bockus and you're not.
And I'm Jamal Smith. Thanks again for tuning in.
All right. So we're going to take you out like we always take you out with a bang. So peace out, y'all. Appreciate you.